We go. Welcome. Good evening. Welcome to Glens Falls County Council. It's Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. It's the seven-thirty in our regular session. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, glorified Councilwoman Palmer, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First up, public comment period. Peter, please let us know if you've got anybody that joins us online. And for public comment, please come to the, come up to the microphone and tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Kate Ruse and I live in Glens Falls. I've also lived in many cities in the United States, Canada, and England, and I've always had a very strong interest in how local government works. That's why I come to your meetings. And what I have found is that Glens Falls is really very unique in the fact that you operate, you certainly have differences of opinion. That's a good thing. But you operate looking out for the goodness and respect of all of your citizens. And I really appreciate that. I think you should feel very proud of it. Fifty years ago, I took time off from my professional job where I faced discrimination along with every other woman who worked there. And I took my little boy and we drove to Washington DC where we went to a rally in support of the Equal Rights Amendment. We didn't get it. We still don't have it. Every large country in the developed world has an equal rights amendment or its equivalent, except the United States. In November, in New York State, there's a constitutional amendment that voters will have an opportunity to vote on. It's very important. It will protect every resident in this state from discrimination based on gender, race, national origin. Excuse me. And it's much needed. I ask you, as the leaders of this community, to endorse that resolution, to speak out in favor of it publicly because it will impact every single resident of Glens Falls positively. They will be protected from discrimination on gender, race, nationality, sex, and disability. They're very important protections. I believe that all of you have a commitment to the well-being of this community. I see it every time I come to these meetings, even when you argue with one another. It's the common good that you are working for, and I appreciate that. So I hope you will continue that work and endorse the proposed New York State Equal Rights Amendment, and I'll just pass topics around.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Peter, do we have anything online? If not, we'll go to committee reports. Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development, Economic Development, or Economic Development, Community Development Council Committee met last week with students from Glens Falls High School. Rochelle Gormley, her public policy class. She, it's a college-level class through the University of Albany. And they had a tour, actually, her whole class had a tour of our DRI with Dr. Flag, our Economic Development Director. They were very engaged during that time. Asked a lot of questions, and Dr. Flag challenged them to, or not challenged them, but posed a question to them. What are your thoughts about what we should do in our market center, in our downtown area? And they took that question to heart, and a bunch of them got together and created a proposal, ideas, which is in front of you. We met with them in a snowstorm at one forty-five at the school building, administration building, and it lasted past school. All the kids and parents were running in the streets to get home, and our students were sitting in the meeting, engaging with us. We had Amy Collins, our tourism director, Jeff, our economic development director, Councilman Andrew, Councilwoman Gooden, myself. And it was, they were engaged. They were very thoughtful in their presentation, their slideshow, which is here in front of you. I encourage you to take a look at it. Some of them were like, were like not doing that. And it was great to see that they had the same mindset as we here thinking about them. And others were like, wow, never really thought of that at the synthetic ice skating rink. It's the one that came to mind, and they led with that one. And, you know, the young lady that presented that was talking about how we're such a hockey town and it really leaves little space or time for other people to skate because Green Park is such a weather-related facility, the pond. So she thought of, this would be a great idea for the market center or area of the market center, or it's movable so you could take it to other places. We had one young lady talk about urban wedding venue downtown. We had the barn venues and an urban wedding setting with the reception parties. Things like that, pop-up museums, and concerts, and other activities. It was awesome. They really put time and thought into this. They talked about sustainability, how these activities could be sustainable. They talked about cost, well thought out. They engaged with other members of the community to see if it was a viable thing. They also talked about handicaps, which was incredible for our young people to think about something like that. So it was wonderful, and I just, continues, that school district continues to make me proud of what we produce out of there. And I have no doubt that these young people are going to go far wherever they go after school. So I encourage you to take a look at this. I don't know if any of the other committee members want to add anything to it, but I just was really impressed. The other thing that we did talk about, and we briefly touched on it because it was so late and the kids had to go. We briefly touched upon a Youth Advisory Board Task Force Committee. Mrs. Gormley had some thoughts on that. We're going to circle back, the mayor and I will circle back with her to sort of flush that stuff out and then put a plan together to start engaging our young people with our government. So thank you very much for your time. And I don't know if any of the other committee members want to add anything to that, but it was truly amazing to see these young people in action.
Thank you. Sounds fantastic. Councilman Downey.
Well, the Sustainability Committee, I think, is in the drop-back fifteen-inch pond. We didn't have a meeting down to sixteen, then it doesn't look like we're going to have one on the thirtieth, so I'm electing February.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Lander, Lieutenant.
Management personnel didn't have a meeting. We really didn't have even a workshop. I did reach out to them before I did this and talked to the mayor as well. Judy Villa White and myself recently met with a potential vendor for health insurance for city employees. You know, it's pretty startling to think that our cost for health insurance for our employees is almost as large as the police department budget, or the fire department budget. And this is just health insurance. It's in excess of four million dollars a year. So I thought that rather than waiting till August when we get the, you know, unbelievable eye-opening letter that says your health insurance might go up twenty-two percent, that we start trying to get our eggs in a row right now and take a look at what's out there, options that are available to buy health insurance, whether it be direct from the carriers, through a local agent, through a consortium, because we don't have to whittle down too much of that four-point-three million dollars to potentially save the city maybe a half million dollars. So we had a good meeting. We'll be following up with this particular vendor over the next month or so, and then once we have a feel for where they may be, they can't quote your prices right now, from where they may be, we'll start looking at other options as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Palmer.
The Recreation Committee is going to meet on the twenty-ninth at 1:00 PM. I did have a chance to meet with the mayor last week to talk about the work that the Rec Committee had done at our last meeting, identifying additional improvements that we'd like to make to our parks. And we had a good discussion about it. I have some notes. So the committee will need again to kind of go over all of that. And then we also will be talking about fire nights and cold. So we might be in good shape to actually move forward in February, but I'll let you know. The Building and Codes Committee had to reschedule our meeting because we had an employee who was out for personal reasons and hadn't had time to review the draft of our snow removal plans. But we will resume and get back to that as soon as that's possible.
Thank you. Councilman Lander.
The Tech Committee met on January tenth and discussed cybersecurity and some things that we're looking to move forward with regarding that. There is, I have a question now, too. The state, through the governor's speech was, for state to state, was saying that largest municipalities in the county, like the city, would be eligible for some cybersecurity options. So I'm following up with our fire of that. We didn't have a representative from Store Tech at our meeting, so a couple of items got kind of pushed to the side. We're having another meeting on February seventh before our next council meeting. That'll be at five-thirty. It's on Teams. If anybody wants to join in, just reach out to me, and I'll get them connected with that.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Gooden, committee reports. Thank you. Under voice vote, we only have, we have three resolutions. Is there any that the council would like to pull? No. This is just for the voice vote. Not hearing, the voice for Resolution One is to approve the minutes of the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of Glens Falls County Council is attached. Two is a resolution to approve the Clerk's fiscal and two thousand twenty-three end-of-year report. Three is a resolution to accept the Glens Falls Building and Codes Report for December twenty-twenty-three. Do we have a motion for a, no, yes, do we have a motion? Motion to vote?
Second.
All in favor? I think you're confusing myself with the roll call and votes for. That third run was apparently too much for me. So under roll call vote, I'd like to pull Resolution Four from this. We have not, we didn't, we didn't send the, this proposed subject to the Planning Board for their review, but it was too late to get on their Planning Board agenda, so they did not, they did not address it, or, you know, and discuss it and then come up with a recommendation. So I'd just like to pull this and let them do that, let them have that conversation, and then come back to us if that's okay. So I'm suggesting we pull Resolution Four. Are there any other resolutions the council would like to pull for discussion? Not hearing. Resolution Five is a resolution to approve the transfer of twelve thousand twenty dollars and sixty-three cents from the Glens Falls Fire Department, two thousand twenty-three budget line, eight-two-three-four-one-zero-dash-four-four-zero-one-dash-one EMS training to GGFT twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, eight-two-three-two-four, eight-two-three-four-one-zero-dash-four-four-zero-one EMS training. These funds are from the New York State Department of Health Bureau of EMS and shall fully support the EMS pilot program for department training without assistance from our budgetary funds. Six is a resolution to carry forward the balance of two thousand twenty-three general fund revenue line. Two, the two thousand twenty-four federal forfeiture and crime proceeds is follows. One is carry forward the balance of twenty-twenty-three general fund revenue to the two thousand twenty-four federal forfeiture and crime proceeds general fund revenue budget, eight-zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine-dash-two-six-two-six by twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents. An increased budget code expense appropriation, eight-two-three-one-two-five-dash-four-four-seven-nine by twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents. The next is to further resolve to carry forward the balance of the twenty-three general fund revenue to the twenty-four state forfeiture and crime proceeds general fund revenue budget of zero-nine-zero, eight-zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine-dash-three-zero-nine-eight by twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And to increase budget line code expense appropriation, eight-two-dash-three-one-two-six-dash-four-four-seven-nine by twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Further be resolved to carry forward the balance of the twenty-twenty-three general fund revenue line, revenue to two thousand twenty-four Police Athletic League general fund revenue budget, eight-zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-dash-two-seven-zero-two by five thousand five hundred and one dollars and eighty-nine cents. An increased budget code expense appropriation, eight-two-dash-three-one-two-four-dash-four-four-seven-nine by five thousand five hundred and one dollars and eighty-nine cents. Seven is a resolution to authorize and approve the City of Glens Falls Community Development manual payments in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy cents, including payments that reimburse expenses of not-for-profits per program year, two thousand twenty-three agreements as attached. Eight is a resolution to authorize the City's Economic Development Director to use the funds from the City's existing economic development budget to cover certain engineering and design costs associated with preferred seating solution for the Eastfield Baseball Stadium, Grandstand, in an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Nine is a resolution to approve with favorable recommendation from the Water and Sewer Board, the purchase of the Q's camera system for a total of seventy-three thousand dollars, seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to be paid for using ARPA funds. And to further resolve to increase revenue line, eight-zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine-dash-four-zero-eight-nine ARPA by seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty. An increased interfund transfer from G-zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine-dash-five-zero-three-one. An increased sewer budget line, G-seven-eight-one-two-zero-dash-two-two-zero-zero by seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Ten is a resolution to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the City of Glens Falls and Warren County Soil and Water Conservation for the stormwater outfall sampling required by New York State in the amount of two thousand dollars per year for the next two years. Also authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement approved by the City Attorney. Eleven is a resolution to approve a one-year extension per the awarded bid CGF-two, dash-two-three-dash-zero-two, in two thousand twenty-three mowing of dams landfill to the Garden Barn LLC, which had been agreed to hold flat the price for two thousand twenty-four with another one-year option to renew. Twelve is a resolution to approve the reappointment of Michelle Sterns of Thirty-Nine Unka Street, Glens Falls, New York, to the Board of Assessment Review for the term of two thousand, excuse me, October first, two thousand twenty-three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. Thirteen is a resolution to approve an encroachment permit number one-dash-two-zero-four for William J. Dyer and Son, Twenty-nine-seventy-six River Road, Melrose, New York, to allow for a street opening to install a two-inch conduit under fire roof from pole twenty-eight in front of the Williams Stadium, four hundred and fifty of directional bore into the City of Glens Falls Field, to the City of Glens Falls Fieldhouse from January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, following the city's standard requirements. Fourteen is a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license, number one-two-zero-four-two-four, Jack Celeste, DPA, Coach's Corner, one ninety-nine Hattery Road, Gansford, New York, to vent in front of the city park on a weekly basis from January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Fifteen is a resolution to approve the warrant. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
Yes, so vote.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Alarge Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Downey?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew?
Yes.
Councilman Palmer?
Yes.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
And Councilman Gooden?
Yes.
Thank you. Old business. Councilman Clark.
I don't want to take away Councilwoman Gooden's thunder on this, but I do want to say thank you. What a wonderful event the Martin Luther King celebration was at Christ Church in the March. It was, the weather was a little questionable, but it wasn't, those kids, again, are absolutely amazing. And the Lake George School, under the direction of their music teacher, was just wonderful. So, and our MCs for the afternoon, they were great. So it was just so wonderful to see, and of course, our Glens Falls act always does a real job. But we're so blessed that we have, and it was a really great turnout. And just so blessed to have a community that comes out and supports, supports everybody. Everyone. So, but I just want to thank you. I thank you, committee, for putting on such a wonderful event for years.
Thank you. That is great. Old business. Councilman Downey.
Nothing.
Councilman Lander.
No.
Councilwoman Palmer.
No.
Councilman Lander.
No.
Councilwoman Gooden.
Well, I do have to just elaborate. The Martin Luther King Program was wonderful, and, you know, it just shows really what a great community this really is. Because, you know, everyone was kind of doubting it when it was like a fight-out at one o'clock.
Yes.
But, you know, it's like, you know, we've marched in it before, we've gone for it before, and the numbers just keep going up and up. And I mean, the people really came out. The kids were outstanding. I just don't see how they can get any better every year, but they seem to. And then this year, we had even greater things happen because Peter joined us, and now we have it on YouTube. It's wonderful. This is our first year for that. We actually had a camera person this year. They asked me, they, it's like, I love it. They came right in and just, it's just such a wonderful community. And my grandson was the MC, and he was like, Grandma, I'm so nervous. You'll be fine.
He did a great job.
Exactly. It was, my Glens Falls students, I co-EMC with them. It was just a great program, and I just appreciate this, the young lady, Brecockley was her last name.
Oh, yeah.
And she did all the sign for the entire program.
That's quite, and that's quite a feat to do that.
It really was.
Usually, when you're doing sign language, you have a couple of people.
That's right.
Because you wouldn't think it's taxing, but I know that it is.
Yes.
She busted a buck.
She did a great job, didn't she?
Yeah.
So I just want to thank this wonderful community for always just, just being the great community that we are. Thank you.
Thank you. New business. Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is, I want to remind everyone, the annual Battle of the Bridge is this weekend on Saturday. Doors open at one o'clock at our school. It's the annual Glens Falls Teachers Against All Glens Falls Teachers to benefit the South High Dance Marathon. Always a good time. It seems like we are like, never win. But it's, that's all right because it's all for a good cause. And there's no charge at the door, but there's lots of opportunities to give money to this wonderful cause, wonderful community activity. The other thing I want to say is, how about those Thunder? Oh, my goodness. They're on eleven game, Win Street. We've got games Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They are just amazing, and I don't know about you, but it's everywhere I go. It's the top of the town. Excuse the pun, restaurant, but it's just, they're putting on an incredible show on the ice and off the ice, and it's just amazing. We have season tickets, and I like my Sunday games because there's not a lot of people there. But let me tell you, the Sunday game, we were there, there was over three thousand people, and it was incredible. So I see a lot of good things happening for this team. I just want to encourage people, if you have an opportunity this weekend to catch one of the games, please do because you won't be disappointed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gooden.
Nothing to withstand.
Councilman Lander.
Thank you, Mayor. Being this snow longer than I am, I'm going to tell you, there's some of your hydrants, fire hydrants out, even though by Friday, we probably won't have any snow. But please keep that in mind. It's an important thing to me, and I think it's an important thing to the fire department, to all the people who live in your neighborhoods. Over the second ward, we had a car accident involving a fire hydrant, and when they went to replace the fire hydrant, they realized they couldn't shut the valve off, so. And that freezing cold we had just recently, they were out there, the City Water Department. Did a great job. The road was closed some, but not as much as it could be, and it only affected a few people. So I'd like to thank them for the good work that they did. It was nice to see a big-name act come to the Glens Falls Civic Center. Like Jim said, you know, hockey is doing well right now. We're starting to draw some crowds. Jeff Dunham was just there. Place was sold out. We got a lot of publicity from that. And talked to some downtown businesses about what they thought about it, and they were ecstatic. So it was good to see an event like that at our Civic Center. I'm going to make contact with the police chief and see if it's possible that during February, we might be able to get all of the school crossing guards that we have here in the city here to a county council meeting to be recognized. They're probably the best ambassadors we have. First of all, they're older, so they have this thing about kids. They have this thing about wanting to engage people and talk to people. They not only do a great job, they're a good representative of our community. So, you know, my mayor, I'm going to reach out to the police chief, see if we can get that done. And then if we do get it done, Mayor, maybe you could declare we get a day, a crossing guard day here in the city and have a resolution.
Yes.
So it was good that we could agree. We, I also just want to compliment the downtown merchants. You know, we've had these nuisance snowstorms, and it's not really easy to get rid of that snow. Sometimes you can't use your snow blower. City does a great job keeping the streets cleaned and the parking lots clean, but after a recent snowstorm, it was nice to see that the downtown merchants were out there getting those sidewalks cleaned off. So we do appreciate that. And lastly, Kate, it's nice to see you. And if you're a native from this community, you can sometimes find yourself so full of yourself about how great we are. But it really is wonderful to hear somebody like you who's had other worldly experiences, other places, to say what you did tonight about our community, and I thank you for that because I think that's who we really are. Thanks.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Yes, on January thirtieth, Supervisor Turner and I will have our first Third Ward Community Forum together. It will be at First Presbyterian Church at six PM. And Jeff Flag will join us. We like, in the past, Supervisor Brever and I would invite city employees so our constituents could get to know them and ask questions. So Supervisor Turner and I would like to continue that, so we hope to see people there again, January thirtieth, six P M. at First Presbyterian Church.
Is that downstairs or is it?
You know what, I'm not sure what room they gave us, but we'll have signs, so if you come in, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
I'm excited for her new role. That's great.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Lappert.
New business. Thank you. So yesterday, Warren County had a public meeting for their comprehensive plan. I know you were there and I just saw Councilor Large there as well. It was interesting, you know, seeing the process and look forward to getting, kicking off a process similar to that for our own comprehensive plan update. Also, Adirondack Theater Festival is coming up on thirty year anniversary and someone from, from the organization reached out to me and was looking to see if maybe what they could do to get the mayor to proclaim a day for the Adirondack Theater Festival. So I'll follow up with you afterwards.
Sounds good.
And that's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gooden, new business?
Yes, the month of February, the N W A C in collaboration with Crandall Liveberry on Tuesdays in the month of February to celebrate Black History Month. We have a film every Tuesday, starts at six o'clock. We, well, it doesn't start at six, it actually starts at six thirty, but from six, well, throughout the film, actually, we have good food. We have educated, so we have it every week. I know we have council meetings in between, but if you can make it, they're, they're documentaries. They're always excellent, excellent. But I always encourage because we have great food.
It's great. Extra motivation. I don't want you to think that I'm asking this just because of the free food.
That's right.
Can we eat that date again?
Every Tuesday at seven o'clock.
I think that Warren County Comprehensive Plan went off so well because there was free food.
I noticed that I waited, I waited just a little too long and it was all gone. So I, you know, as soon as you lose.
Mary, what'd you say? We don't run out?
That's right.
Thank you. Under new business for myself, I just want to remind everyone tomorrow night, we're having the State of the City address at the Queensbury Hotel. It looks like we've got nearly a hundred people coming already. It's just fantastic. I tried to invite everybody I could think of to come and, but we won't be having Jeff Dunham there. I've asked him if he would, he, I'm just, sorry, I gotta make a joke somewhere. So please, please come. Five P M. tomorrow night at the Queensbury Hotel. Thank you. I bet. Oh, and the other one I wanted to mention that I have a new electric snow blower and it's been great so far, but we really haven't tested it. So we got a couple of snowstorms, but I am excited that it is working and, and that I'm doing my small part. I can't afford to buy an electric truck, but the snow blower we started with, so anyway, it's been great. So it's still like two storms, isn't that right? I'll, I'll report back to you and let you know how it's going. That is all I've got for new business. All right, we'll open back up for any public conduct. Anybody on high, Peter? Not seeing anybody here either. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We stay on adjourn. Thank you very, very much.